I'm going to suggest a couple of processes. So the plan is, we've got a lot of discussions multiple times that perhaps we don't want to have again. So if we feel like we're getting repetitive, we can have the same conversation. Further, I suggest that perhaps we take six weeks off and work that agenda setting, but certainly we need our seven directors to decide where we're going. And it seems like perhaps in that time, we should take six weeks off and come back at or see where we're at. Those are just two suggestions. But good to go. With that, I think Steve, you had some new data that's posted that you wanted to stick straight to the data.
This is November 10th of 2015. Hold on. So this is from a previous one, and then there was a request to age progress some various cohorts of students. And that was followed up by some requests after the age progression data, after I shared that with you. Then a couple of directors requested that we move some of those folks around. Before I move into that, though, I'd really like to draw your attention to the piece down here. If you go back to the agenda itself, you'll notice that the number of people included. For those of you who don't know what it looks like real quickly, this is the rather lengthy enrollment report that we do as part of our enrollment demographics and class size report. And you'll note on, there we go, you'll note here that I drew attention to several tables, 16, 21, 25, 27, 32, that they show that age progressing the data in and of itself is not necessarily an accurate representation, simply because that data changes over time. And so it may be of benefit to you to take a look at the charts and the graphs that are associated with that data in the enrollment report to see how things change over time. For instance, our ELL students enter when they're younger and tend to age out as they get older, so to simply age progress them may not actually give us accurate information when we look at that. So with that said, you can compare kind of the apples to apples with the kids as they are then compared to who they are today. This is an age progression for Liberty High School. And I'll blow it up a little bit here for you. So let me just grab 2021. So these are the kids who are ninth through 12th grade in 2021, which would make them seventh, sixth, fifth, fourth graders today. And is that right? Yeah, seven, sixth, fifth, fourth today. So that's that cohort of four, grade levels aged up based on the current board-approved attendance areas. And then that shows you the demographics associated with those. Scroll down, here's your West High number, same thing, based on the board-approved attendance areas. Here's City High, based on the board-approved attendance areas. Then again, based on board member requests. This is Liberty High School with Kirkwood moved out and up to Liberty, or sorry, with Liberty High School with Kirkwood added to it. This is West High with Kirkwood removed. This is West High with Kirkwood removed and the Alexander kids on the east side of the river moved to City. Here's your City High kids with the Alexander kids on the east side moved to the city. So the kids on the west side are not part of that cohort group. So again, that's age progression for each of those attendance areas based on today's demographics in those four-year cohorts.
Just want to just go for the top one.
Page or top?
Just the first check. Yeah, so that's Liberty, right? So I'm just checking if Liberty's not over, right?
I have capacity numbers on the bottom, so you see that there's 1,000 seats there until we get to 2022, 23, at which point then there'll be 1,500 seats. So you can see the age progression of the kids, and you see the demographics or the capacity numbers as they change. Obviously convenient that there were 1,000 kids here. And then you drop to 68% after those seats are added, then you see it growing again.
Conversation, all right. West? So the first scenario, it's way over. Starts at 100%, it's way over.
And you're looking at this line here.
All right, any questions on that? Next. So this was with, sorry, the third, last one. And that was with east of the river, city, right?
That's correct. That's not with Kirkwood there. So that might be a table that would be useful to have. Yeah, that's Kirkwood out and Alexander out. Yeah. Might be useful to be a table of Kirkwood there and the western part now.
All right, City. Yeah, so I had kids back to City, basically back right over.
Say that again?
Way over capacity. Kids back to City, basically keeps it over capacity.
Yeah, although it's not taken to any of them.
Is that making the assumption that most kids that take up the city?
No, but I'm looking at the enrollment report, or at least on the most recent, for example, we got, I think, about 70 from one, some others smaller from Liberty that are current.
And that's a role for, for cases that kids wanted to matriculate back into their home school, they could do so.
Well, it's quite true that there are going to be some kids that take in any time. So if you're trying to figure out who's going to build them, I mean, these, you know, it's different. It's different than I understand, but that's another factor, since it's not being taken into the charts.
One might have some position.
All right, any other capacity that you want to share? All right. Andy, I think we're probably good, Steve. I guess we're outside.
Sorry, say that again?
I told you, I think we're probably good unless you want to pull up other numbers.
No, I think that's fine. I think it'd be useful to have similar charts for the juniors. Won't be able to project this.
So are we going to do that now, or do you want to do some piece?
I think it'd be useful to have. I don't want to talk about it, so it's a recession, just a communication.
So are we leaving for six weeks from now?
Well, how about, well, I don't know why I'd want to leave, but I kind of like no information.
That's a question for our, for you. Do you have any point of view on how?
What's that?
Junior high numbers?
Age progress junior high numbers?
It's all like an easy thing, or a hard thing?
Yeah, that's pretty, that's. If we're just.
You always say it's not easy.
Well, the, this database I actually have so I can manipulate it. So, yeah, I'm, all I, all you're doing is just age progressing a smaller cohort to an earlier date, right? Right? I mean, it's two years instead of four. But with the same variance, you know? Mm-hmm.
Sounds fine.
I will be out next week, so it won't be for at least two weeks.
Driving next week.
Tomorrow.
That's what I was trying to up you.
Maybe while I'm driving.
You tell us when you go.
I can have it for the next meeting.
All right, any other attachments you want to talk?
No, I mean, I guess I did just want to mention, Steve mentioned it, but with the, the age progression, you know, just in terms of enrollment and the building, that can be useful. But when it comes to the demographic categories, especially the ones that are not fixed, like FRL and ELL and stuff, you know, I, because I understand that there's no real way we have to project what those numbers will be. Age progressing is probably going to overstate them, historically speaking anyways, because historically the numbers have been lower in those categories, in the upper grades and the lower grades. Of course, ELL, pure ELL is kindergarten, still there at night. And, you know, they vary with the economy, they vary with the, you know, ELL, they vary with the creation changes. So, you know, even though those numbers are there, I'm hoping that people understand that those aren't the projection by the district. I mean, it's inaccurate to say. It's just an age progression.
Yeah. It's just a potential indicator of the future, but, you know, while you're maybe right, the absolute number, maybe you're not right, the relative, but I'd compare them, the relative number will probably stay the same, right?
Well, I'm not so sure, because if you age up those FRL numbers, and in fact, the percentage were to go down, I think the differences between the percentages would go down a little bit also.
Have the ratio stay the same.
Ratio is not the same as the difference.
Sure.
But we just don't know. That's why DeYoung Richter will do it, right?
We understand what we're saying, right?
Yeah. But I mean, that's why our economists won't project that, so we just don't know. Not making change. I mean, he grades it all, but.
I'm not sure we ever asked for it.
I thought, I thought I tried earlier to see. I don't think they, I don't think they project demographics.
I mean, I'm sure it's an indication of the ability, and I'm sure it's not a common answer question.
Yeah, I think we did ask them, and I think that they don't project demographics. I think they only project bodies.
I think utilizing our current data and extrapolating it forward is about the most accurate way that we're going to get that. And a lot of things could change. You're right, the economy could change for the better or for the worse. I think it's relatively dangerous to start making assumptions that we're going to pick and choose what data we're going to pay attention to.
I'm not saying we can't look at it, I'm just saying it is not.
You're questioning the validity of it directly.
Projection.
You're, you're saying, you know, this could, this could be, I, correct me if I'm wrong. What I'm hearing is that you're saying, you know, this could be, this could change, so I don't know if I trust it.
No, no, that's not what I'm saying.
Okay.
I'm saying historically, we know that the upper grades, the FRL, is typically five or six, ten, twelve, and then the lower grades. So if you're just going to project FRLs forward, you're going to end up with an overestimate of how many FRL agents are going to end up. And that's, you know, going to lead people to say, oh, well, now I have a number. Well, in fact, there are reasons to believe that that's not what's going to happen. And certainly, you have to do ELL, projecting that forward makes no sense at all. There's a lot of confounding variables, because our ELL numbers as a whole increase over time. So I don't, I don't know to what degree new ELL kids will offset kids leaving, and I'm sure that's one of the reasons why DeYoung Richter doesn't want to try to do that. So yes, from your perspective, over time, ELL population tends to decrease, but if the overall population of ELL students continues to increase, because we've had a 400% increase in the last decade, you have to factor that in while these numbers are going down. Kids matriculate out of the program, but if the overall number of kids increases, what does that tell you? I don't know.
And there are the increases in the ELL. Are they?
They're district-wide.
Spread evenly?
Throughout the buildings or throughout the grade levels?
K through 12.
Um, they tend to be more at the elementary level, but it depends on who moves in, you know? When we get large waves of immigrants, we get a lot of high school kids.
And what's reminding me, in the numbers of years you can be on ELL?
Uh, you can be in the system now, they just changed it to five, but there's a.
There's a funding that.
Right. Yeah, there's no limit for when you can be in there, but the funding limit is five right now, and they're looking at seven as the option.
And do we count them if they're not funded? Do we count them as ELL still?
Yeah, they're still in the system. If you haven't reached your proficiency level, you don't age out of.
Okay. So it's a proficiency endpoint.
Right.
And do we know approximately what that usually runs for people? The amount of time?
That's an, it depends, you know, I don't think there's a, at least I haven't seen an average because of the difference in the participants in the program. So are you a refugee? Are you, you know, so?
Well, and I know we've had such a large increase just recently, so.
Right. Yeah.
All right, other attachments?
Of those, of those six, I'd like to, you know, the last work session we get to discuss, and I'd like to discuss the letters that we've received from the city of Iowa City, as well as the mayor Nielsen.
Which one would you like up first?
Either or. I, both of these letters, taken together or separately, however you wish, illustrate to me a significant concern with regard to support that we will have on any initiatives that we should choose to move forward, including a general obligation bond. And pretty clearly, the city's discussion, and I know that we have one city council member here who cannot discuss on behalf of the city, but I think that this is, this should be a, this should be a major red flag to everybody here, that the actions and the direction that we have taken in the direction we're headed right now seems to have raised the ire of people who are very vested in their community, who have the support of their communities, whether it's North Liberty or Iowa City. The fact that Iowa City, by property tax revenue, is responsible for nearly 60% of the funds that run our district, and two of the high schools reside in Iowa City, being City and West. I think that the Iowa City letter in particular really expresses great concern about what we're doing, because right now, it certainly seems like we are creating more and more imbalance the further down the rabbit hole we get. The North Liberty letter, you know, seems, is focused more on curriculum offerings, being under-enrolled at Liberty, and also specifically mentions the GO bond. And quite frankly, that loss of, as it states in the second, or in the one, two, third, fourth paragraph, any loss of community support for the general obligation bond, no matter what part of the district it comes from, is going to be catastrophic to completing the facility master plan. That affects Lincoln, Mann, all three junior highs, all three high schools, additional elementary schools in North Liberty, Lemmy addition, there's like 10 elementary schools that are still part of that. That facility master plan is commitment to the next century of education, public education in this district. And I think that it's important that we understand really what these letters mean. These aren't just complaint letters. These are, these are letters that, that are telling us, you're making a big mistake. And that mistake is, is, is one that, at the bare minimum, right now with these numbers that we're looking at, at the bare minimum creates a high school in the northern part of our district that is very affluent, very Caucasian, 83%, just a few years down the road. Meanwhile, City High and West High have very different demographics and more barriers to learning in the classroom with regards to poverty. They're overcrowded. That's very bothersome to me, especially some of these numbers with, with regard to, you know, City being at 109, 110% capacity. Somehow we're, I love that somehow we're bothered by, by Liberty temporarily being overcapacity while the 500 student addition is being built, but we don't seem to care at all about Southeast Junior High currently being nearly 10% overcapacity at this moment, and City High projected to be 110%. I'm really concerned about, about this and what these letters say. These are very, very, these should be eye-opening letters, and wow, I just, I don't know, I just see, I just see red flags all over the place with both of these, and with that, I'll just kind of open it up to discussion.
You know, I'm not surprised that it's disagreement. You know, we're three to three disagreeing, so it's a, I think it's a very tough issue. And, you know, we've got letters from Iowa City, but not campus. We've got Mayor Nielsen, but we have here from the council in our Liberty. We have here from Corville. People are in a disagreement, elected officials are in a disagreement about this issue. I do think it's a hard issue. Again, I don't blame anybody for wanting, wanting to balance, but at some point, the issues associated with distance do kick in. So that's what makes it hard.
So somewhere, you're saying that distance has an effect on classroom performance, and considering our strategic goals are increased reading and math and decrease the achievement gap, you're saying that transportation somehow affects that?
Yeah.
You're saying that?
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
Is there data to back that up?
I think there is data, if you want it, showing that time on a bus correlates with court.
So our own.
But listen, I am talking to these people, everybody I talk to from those neighborhoods is pleading with me not to do this. I trust them as a better judge of what is good or bad for them than I am. That's my method for figuring that out. And I don't see them as just saying, oh, I'm attached to my school, I don't want to change. They're telling me concrete things. And so that bothers me. And that, and again, I think everybody would agree, at some point, distance kicks in. I mean, we're not, nobody's suggesting we should bust Alexander up to clear pre- command to help diversify their schools, even if we could do it. At some point, it's too burdensome to people. So that's all. And again, I don't want to rehash the whole thing tonight, but that's where I am.
So, but, okay, so that, that is a, okay, you say that's a burden. I get that. I understand it. I think I hear what you're saying. But when it comes to classroom performance, our own data shows that boundary area for a school in square miles has zero, don't shake your head.
That's amateur stats.
It isn't.
One of the reasons that is true.
So you're just going to say you don't believe it?
Is because our high poverty areas have schools right in the middle of them. So yeah, the distance is very short.
So you're okay with creating a segregated school district?
But there's not going to be a correlation there between distance, you can't measure the.
I want to be clear, I want to be clear. Are you okay with creating a segregated school district?
I do not see.
Capital S, segregated.
I do not see a school that is 30 or 40 or 50% low-income or 50% minority as segregated. The concern about Liberty, it's a concern, but in Iowa, you know, the distance kicks in at some point, you're going to have trouble. Probably that's lower rate of Caucasian percentage than you find in a lot of Iowa schools. But, you know, that's, that's geography at some point. I don't like it, but I don't want to balance it and fix it on the backs of people I'm making their lives worse. So again, to me, it's a really hard question. That's where I am.
And just on capacity, I mean, there was a design element to try to get to the high schools relatively equitable in enrollment. And this design element was really a interequitable program. And just remember, we've seen in the past when high schools are similar size, that there are inequalities, and that will become a concern. So I mean, that's why we tried to get Liberty, City, and West. Again, not equal, right? Or at least in a similar range for, because it will in fact, it just, but there's programming or scheduling, those become the same thing. If you have only one class after someone, you can't schedule it, feels a little bit unprogrammed, you know? So again, just, just remember. And again, I know people say, hey, I'm okay with going and going to Liberty, that'll last for a year or two, and there'll be the phone wire, but I don't have that global program that just comes from similar size, so. So if you have like, you know, if you have a Liberty of 1100 and City's at 1600 plus, there's going to be a difference.
I mean, I'm not, I'm not denying that there are things on both sides of the scale.
We just need to understand then that too, you know, we took kind of City and West down with the thought that we need to renovate, right? West particularly, we have the numbers here, West at 100%, we go to 110%. And I'm not, it's going to be an interesting plan, I don't know. Our thought was to get it below capacity, so we need to rotate the renovations for the school. And I try to do it at a higher percentage, so. So when I say it's going to be interesting, it's going to be a lot of horribles and temporary reasons, it's just, it's going to be interesting however they affect them. All right, other topics?
Oh, how about the grandfather stuff?
Sure.
What do you all think? Anything on there? Seems going too far or something we should do?
Well, Steve, do you want to touch on it? I mean, it already is an arm for us.
Well, I knew some of that stuff was sort of already assumed unless we changed it. It's not written down anywhere. I thought it might be good to have a document where we just, not this document, but something that this will lead to, where we actually have all this written in one place for people to know. So some of that stuff, I do think is assumed, capstone years.
It's pretty much.
Right. When it comes to the high school, again, if we're not making 11 and 12 graders go to Liberty, then I would think that that maybe rules should apply also to any City High people already assigned to West, including, taking sense of Alexander's days in West, or, you know, we've got Bills moving to West. Same rule, 11, 12 graders without doubt, if they wanted to, they would get.
I agree with you, probably another document.
Anything on what I was suggesting that seems like it's going too far for any of these respects?
Anytime you start mentioning the word grandfathering.
I don't like the word, but it's a better way of talking about it.
The district just does a lot of history work, doesn't work, because everybody's been asked for it on the elements, it's becoming unmanageable. For me, myself, I'd love to come back and say, listen, we're going to open up voluntary transfer. It's not a thing we should do, but if there is capacity there, you can go there. If that's your grandfathering.
Yeah.
Well, because are you getting grandfathered kids into a school that's 110%? Hypothetical portion, but. Let's come back and open up, open enrollment, voluntary transfer, sorry, we obviously have to work our own bill. And the people can go where they want to go for this capacity. Now, I do agree with the six, eight, 11, 12, like, that's just an arm, it's a one-year, it's kind of like a longer than two-year transition period.
Now there, then with the particular ones about Van Allen and Lincoln, I thought were special cases. And I, I'd love to see the numbers on it before we did anything about it. But if it's a small number of people, I do think the fact that some families already basically volunteered to go through a transition by choosing Southeast instead of Northwest, I'd be inclined to leave them alone. And in exchange, that's change, but if it cancels out kind of if we have a handful of Van Allen kids are roughly those same years that now are Wickham kids, or, you know, in theory are in the Wickham neighborhood, but have gone to school their whole lives with all these people at Liberty, and there's just a handful of them kind of singled out to, I would let them opt in to Liberty if we're going to. Again, I'd want some reassurance it's not going to do crazy things.
Voluntary transfer.
Well.
I have no problem looking at it. No problem. It's just, it becomes a total slippery slope. How do you grandfather somebody, not the other person, not the other person, the future moves? And so I'd like to do the same analysis and just ask, why couldn't you voluntary transfer?
Well, you know, just from a parent's point of view, the voluntary transfer, well, yeah, you can go there as a freshman, we don't know whether you can come back as a sophomore. To me, it's a big deterrent. It's supposed to be a deterrent. But for those groups, I don't feel like we should really want it to turn a little.
I've never seen a case of grandfathering until probably against summer.
I don't know, there's, but again, I'm not, I'm not suggesting extensive grandfathering. I mean, these are minor, I think.
Hey, let's come back and talk.
You know, just to get it on the table, so I can put this in the letter, and then think of it as how it changes, but. What's going to happen to these kids that go into school from Bonner, I mean, from Rose Oaks? what's going to happen to these kids at Wood School from Bonner, I mean, from Rose Oaks? If suddenly they have to en masse kind of leave Rose Oaks, would we consider any kind of, even then the option to stay at Wood just to get some stability in what is obviously, I mean, some, some changes that don't work sort of totally before expected? Something we talked about too. But again, I don't want to be too ad hoc about it, but it's not crazy to think we can have some kind of consistent approach to a large unsought sort of housing change as a foot on, for people to make up some policy for that. Just want to throw it out there. And you know, we could face something similar in Porus Bureau on open enrollment. I mean, right now, Steve, if those kids end up in a different residence, it's just pure voluntary transfer if they want to go back to Wood, right?
Depends on when they move. So they, like this year, they were going to close them out in the middle of the school year. So they close in the middle of the school year, we afford students the opportunity to finish the school year so they don't have to go through that transition. And you have to do self-transport though.
Right.
So that's the challenge with that. It happens over the course of the summer, which was our conversation with the city, is if you want to make a change of that magnitude, you should do that between school years because then that gives parents the opportunity to relocate, us to get kids registered for school. They get to start at a new school in the fall with the rest of the kids when they start. So that was our recommendation of the city.
So I might just ask, what's the timing that you guys would be interested in on kind of getting this down?
Well, if the. If the assumption is that you go, and then you have to, they're hit capstone two years basically, that takes some of the time pressure off because Horn and Hills are the ones that are most going to be impacted by this. Right? They're the only ones that have affected this fall.
But yeah.
Because Hills also worked this time of fall. Did we?
Yes, we did.
Yeah.
But again, if you don't have to do anything to take care of those of the existing practice, to sort of take care of that, then this isn't super urgent.
A hard move to be there.
Does that not take the list this fall, 2017?
I think the place where it, it's, it's more, in my opinion, is more urgent is when you have a sixth grader that has their capstone year, so they get to stay at Van Allen, for example, and so they go to Wicoming. But then they're in a totally different feeder pattern, so the capstone year doesn't really capture what the parent's actually concerned about. It's not so much the sixth grade year, it's more like the next six years. So.
So the horn parents would like to know, wait, is it?
Yeah, and I'm not taking away.
Once they're shooting.
There are situations where the capstone doesn't quite answer the question that they're looking for.
That's your question. We came back up to you, told me we're the second meeting in our life.
Okay.
We have to do six weeks off and then we got the elections done and then we know what we're doing.
And that would give Steve time to give us the numbers of children. Because I, I guess my concern is that when I consider, particularly, you mentioned the Van Allen and Lincoln kids, it's a very small group of kids. And I think it would, my personal opinion is, is that that is a really hard thing to give them the sixth grade year and then say, oh, now different feeder pattern. And if, we're only talking three, four students, you know, I think it would be good to, for us to talk about in, in July or whenever we get to it, not too much later than that.
Just think of a way we can do open enrollment. Maybe there's an exception in there.
Yeah. Yeah. I, I mean, when it's just a handful, you know, I mean, if it's a bigger group of kids and it's, for me, it's not as big of a concern, but it's, it's when it's just a handful, but I think we want to be sensitive to it.
There could be room for superintendent's discretion on these things, versus setting up a rule that everybody.
So we could direct the superintendent, this is what we would like you to use discretion.
Yeah, if you drop variables around it, I mean, you'd want to box that in here a little tight. I'm kind of curious about that now, with, you know, with what you call open enrollment to another district. We have a deadline. And if you miss the deadline, you have to have good cause. Isn't that how it works?
Yep. The state establishes the good cause rules.
This may be beyond the topic, but I, I did kind of wonder if someday we want to talk about. You know, I'm just thinking about if you're, if you're a kid and you're just having a miserable experience at your elementary school and you want voluntary transfer, I guess you usually have some options about where you might go. You can pick one that's under capacity, but I almost feel like maybe there ought to be some kind of cause provision.
Open enrollment.
If you transfer out because you're bullied at this school, really make that kid reapply every year, you know, to stay at this school. And it's for the two. So I just wonder if situations like that might be.
Open enrollment. Open enrollment does require that and it does actually defer to the district to make replacements. So if you're a Clear Creek student and you're coming to us, you apply for open enrollment. You've got to meet that timeframe and then we decide where you go. And we could actually decide that where you go next year is where you, it is different than where you are this year based on the enrollment. So that's the way the state has it set up right now. So we, we really actually look to mirror what the state was doing when we looked at building our system.
So I would pick up on the point.
Yeah.
For, for the second meeting in our lives.
Right.
And are you talking about at the, at the meeting or are you talking about at orgs?
I would think it's at orgs.
Because I think that's when we're giving that grant wood. So if we kind of just, I'm just procedural, I'm just saying it would probably be August. Because that's, he said that's when the grant would person can come.
Concept is not in the next six weeks.
Well, that's.
All right. Anything else for the night? Okay, most of the turn. All papers stash.
All right.
Any votes? Let's make the turn.